It's Tuesday, January 29th, 2019. I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I would ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there anyone wishing to do so? Seeing none, I would ask that Counselor Clark leads us in the salute to the flag.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll?
President Kuschmerich.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are here addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Mr. Vera, good evening.
Good evening. Alexander Vera, 62 North Street. I'm speaking on the 027-19. So, I just want to take a few minutes just to go over some things. I mean, so what that is, what this amendment is proposing is literally, it's going to silence the voters. You know, the voters literally pay, taxpayers are paying each and every one of you $10,000 a year. I'm sure I don't need to repeat that, but just so that everyone watching knows, because some people don't know. What, I mean, you know, this option, right, that's been proposed, probably one of the worst options on the table right now, because what happens is, you know, these subcommittee meetings, any counselor is now not allowed, if it passes, is not going to be allowed to attend, not going to be allowed to sit at the table. That is, you know, for me, I mean, they earned their, you know, by being elected, they earned their seat at the table. So, their questions that they ask at these subcommittee meetings is very valuable to, you know, their constituents. So, it's an insult, not only to the council members, but most of all to the voters of Fitchburg. So, and that's, you know, and that's thanks to them, that's why you are here, you know, you got voted in. I just want to, you know, reiterate that it's really, it's silencing, silencing the voters of Fitchburg, because, you know, some people have questions that they may refer to a certain council member or a certain ward council member, and if that person is not on the committee, then how is it going to be referred over these questions and, you know, then answered back to them? There are better options for this. Leominster uses an option that actually, that advertises the subcommittee meetings as a committee of, as a committee of a whole, so the entire council is present. I mean, there's, that's one option. There's another option. You can make all counselors members of all committees. But I think that this option that Counselor Zarella brought up, I think is probably the worst option on the table. It's silencing, you know, our constituents, it's silencing the taxpayers of Fitchburg, and I think there are better ways to go about that. So, just so that everyone knows, whoever votes in favor for this is silencing people in Fitchburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, if there are no objections from counselors, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met just several minutes ago and took up the following appointments for, all for the Fitchburg Police Department, for permanent reserve police officers, student police officers, and a promotion to permanent police sergeant. I will defer to Chief Martineau to go over the details and backgrounds of each of these individuals. Chief Martineau.
Good evening, Counselors. Earlier this evening, we had the opportunity to present five names to the Appointments Committee for recommendations to become student police officers for the city of Fitchburg. As I stated earlier, all five candidates have gone through rigorous background checks, medical examinations, drug screening, psychological examinations, and physical aptitude tests. We have five exceptional candidates that are going to be filling five vacancies within the police department. At this time, I'd like to just give a little bit of highlights about each candidate in front of me, in front of you this evening. First is Kelton Stacy. Kelton has been working as a civilian dispatcher for the Fitchburg Police Department for the past three and a half years. Kelton has graduated from the Lunenburg High School in 2011. He is currently enrolled at Fitchburg State University. He's pursuing a degree in criminal justice. He has successfully completed the Reserve Intermittent Police Academy, and he resides in the town of Westminster. Christopher Davis. For the past three years, Christopher has been working as a technical solutions specialist for Verizon Wireless. He graduated from Mansfield High School in 2005, studied criminal justice at Quinn-Sigum College. Christopher graduated from the Reserve Intermittent Academy in 2018. He served in the Army National Guard for eight years and currently resides in the city of Fitchburg. Ishmael Santiago Pietri. For the past four years, Ishmael has been serving in the United States Army National Guard. Ishmael graduated from Leominster High Center for Technical Education in 2012, where he studied electrical. For the past three years, he's been employed at Botwell Owens here in Fitchburg, recently attended the Reserve Academy in Boylston. He resides in the city of Leominster. Sean Mackey. Sean is a graduate of St. Bernard Central Catholic High School. He graduated from Fitchburg State University in 2018 with a degree in criminal justice. While at Fitchburg State, he was an outstanding scholar-athlete for the university, playing baseball. He's been working with the Fitchburg DPW Cemetery Department for the past three years, and he currently resides in the city of Fitchburg. Dylan Knox. For the past four years, Dylan has worked for various community, excuse me, for various private security agencies throughout Northwestern County. He's a full-time security officer with UMass Health Alliance Hospital in Leominster. Dylan studied police services at Humboldt College in Ontario, Canada, recently attended the Reserve Academy in Boylston, and Dylan currently resides in the city of Fitchburg. All five candidates before you this evening are set to attend the February 4th Academy at Randolph. It's a 17-week academy where for 17 weeks, they will go through rigorous training, learning how to be a police officer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. These are five exceptional men that are willing to join our police agency, and we look forward to them having successful training, and we're very appreciative of the Appointments Committee making the appointment this evening.
Chief, and if you'd also speak to the promotion to permanent police sergeant as well?
I would be happy to. Last Friday, the Fitchburg Police Department SAR, Sergeant John Mackey, retired after 33 years of service to the city of Fitchburg. With a vacancy in my command staff, I asked Mayor Dina Tally if he would consider appointing our next person that was available for police sergeant. I would like to recognize the accomplishments of Dave Gordon to the rank of police sergeant. Dave has been with the Fitchburg Police Department for 17 years. Dave successfully passed the Massachusetts Civil Service Exam for Police Sergeant. He is currently on the list to be promoted as a police sergeant. For those of you who know David, David has been a true leader in our community. He is an exceptional leader. He is one of the co-founders of the Fitchburg Police Athletic League. He can be seen all around town at different community events. Dave is going to make an exceptional presence within my command staff at the police department. We're really excited that he has this opportunity to be promoted, and with that, we're very thankful to the mayor and the council for making that happen, and we're, we wish Dave nothing but the success as a supervisor within our agency.
Thank you, Chief. Earlier this evening, the committee met and voted unanimously to approve all three categories of appointments.
(Inaudible).
I have a motion and second to approve the Appointments Committee report. Speaking on the motion, the six of you gentlemen before us, I want to sincerely congratulate you and thank you in various capacities. You've already served our city, you've served our communities, and you've served our nation. So, thank you for all that you have done and all that you will do throughout your career with the city of Fitchburg. I hope our audience, both here tonight and at home, reflects on the breadth of experience that is part of our Fitchburg police force, and particularly with these new recruits and our new promotion, the experience that comes forth and to serve our community. I think that's reflected in the police statistics and the crime trends throughout our city, but it's reflected on our streets each and every day. The bonds and the relationships that our officers and our police force are building within the community are second to none. That's a huge credit to this force and our chief, and I want to thank all of you for being here tonight and for all that you will do for our city throughout your lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like, one last moment, just to recognize members of the Fitchburg Police Department that came here this evening to support their brothers as they begin their journey in law enforcement and to give their, congratulations to Sergeant Gordon.
Well said, Chief. Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
(Inaudible). How are you?
You have to do all the different categories.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Stay safe. Congratulations. Stay safe. Congratulations. Stay safe. Congratulations. Very much so. Stay safe. Congratulations. Good luck in your studies. Congratulations. The clerk will now conduct the swearing-in.
(Inaudible). I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the ability and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
And come and upon me.
And come and upon me.
As a student police officer and permanent reserve police officer.
As a student police officer and permanent reserve police officer.
For the city of Fitchburg.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So help me God. You want to do any photos?
Does anybody want to take photos with their families?
Yes.
Counselor, do I, do I have time for that?
Absolutely. I want all of the families and your fellow officers to please take the opportunity to take as many photos as you want.
We get all night, so don't worry. Mr. and Mrs. Mackey? I know you want a picture with your family.
How about Mrs. Shabid?
And I know Mrs. Shabid wants a picture too. Did Jude come see you?
Jude is here.
She's going to kill me. Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen. Sergeant Gordon?
(Inaudible). I just want to say, this competition, to follow the petition, 027-19.
(Inaudible).
I got that big head going down.
Report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donnelly.
We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order. Move the Committee on Records report to accept.
I have a motion and second to accept the Committee on Records report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the mayor. We have one such communication requesting appointment of Mr. David Rousseau as a member of the Fitchburg Housing Authority with a term to expire January 1st, 2024. We sent to appointments. Communications and reports from heads of department. Again, one such letter from Vincent P. Poussetteri II. Move the reading be waived, and counselors will send this and attach this with petition 027-19. Other communication, one from the Department of Environmental Protection regarding waterways application.
(Inaudible).
I have a motion and second that the reading be waived and placed on file in the city clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Returning to the agenda, we have 022-19, annual report from the Monmouth Regional Vocational Technical School for the year 2018.
Move that the reading of the annual report be waived and placed on file with the city clerk.
Second. I have a motion and second that the annual report for Monmouth Regional Vocational Technical High School for the year 2018 be waived and placed on file with the city clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Finance Committee, Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion that we accept the Finance Committee meeting with the exception of 009.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report excluding 009-19. Speaking on the motion, all those.
On the motion, Mr. President.
Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
Mr. President, on 0015, I'd like to say something. I did vote for the MS War program, but I want to point out something to the counselors. For some of you who are new here, back in 2017, we were told as a counselor as a whole, as a member of the council, that we would have a plan in place when we're supporting the MS-14. And I was wondering, is there a plan in place? When is there going to be a plan in place, the mayor? And the second thing about this, I'm not in favor of temporary help. If we're going to think about temporary help and farming out work in the DPW, then we should think about the whole city and what we can do to, how we can make it better to save money on the retirement fund and the OPEC, open, whatever you want to call it. So, when department heads come in front of us, we should be farming out their departments too and say, well, I'll give you a prime example. We say the fire department, when they come in and they want more men, we should say, no, we're not going to hire more men. We're going to start a voluntary services, like land catches or Aspen volunteer, and let them come in and we pay them when they do, when they work on the fire, if we want to save money. If you look at the city of Fitchburg, we have 7,000 catch basins, we have 6,200 manhole covers, and we don't have enough people to do what the DPW can do now. So, to go out and say, we're going to go out and hire temporary employees, then if we're going to stick by our guns, then we should look at all departments and think about the whole city and do it that way, not just one department. So, that's all I have to say, because I'm in favor of the MS War program, to be honest with you, and I believe, and I'll say it again, I believe that everybody should pay, because we all, we all, and I repeat that, each and every one of us benefit from the MS War program. Each and every one of us. Some way, somehow, we all benefit, and we all pollute. As much as you don't think we do, we do. Each and every one of us pollute. Sometimes we grab something out of our pocket, a piece of paper falls out, we don't realize it, into the manhole cover it goes, into the river it goes, and down to the Atlantic Ocean it floats. So, I'll just, that's all I want to say, because I did vote in favor, and I just wanted to say that, but I hoping that we have a plan in place before next year coming up and they want to fund the MS War program, because we were told that we would have one in 2017.
Counselor Boishman, we can, I'd be happy to send a communication reflecting that.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Counselor Zarella.
I just wanted to clarify that the temporary employees were what was requested by the department in this instance. I would love to see us be able to afford more full-time employees for many of our beleaguered departments, but as long as we can't do that, and they're telling us that temporary employees are a viable solution to their needs, that's what we've got to do.
May I correct you, Mr. President?
Counselor Boishman, I have another counselor on the speakers list, but I would be happy to.
I can yield it without yielding my time.
You may indeed. Counselor Boishman.
Mr. President, I, in talking to these, Mr. Ericson, the reason why they asked for temporary employees is because they felt that they want to be able to get full-time employees, because everybody's working, I quote, on the health care and pension plan. They're all afraid of that. So, they figured they had a better shot, a better opportunity to go with the temporary employees. So, I did do my homework on this, and they would, they would rather see full-time employees versus temporary.
I have a motion and second, Counselor Dina Tally.
She was ahead of me.
You did yield, you yielded your time, though.
But in our new council rules, you can yield the floor for point of information without yielding your spot.
Yes, that's correct. Counselor Squalia.
So, I don't have an opinion on the temporary workers, if that's what the DPW so chooses, but I just wanted to note for the residents, the benefit of this $400,000 mandate that we're required for this MS-4 stormwater compliance is we will be getting a fall, you know, additional fall street sweeping, and some of these funds are going to be used to fix sunken-in catch basins and sunken-in manholes. So, additional funding to improve our stormwater system is one benefit for this MS-4 program, and that's all I have to say.
Counselor Dina Tally.
It won't be seen as a benefit to the residents when they inevitably have to pay for it, and that's what some committee members last week advocated for, that we impose a new tax. Because that's what it's going to be. So, I'd love to see if people are happy about this, if they've got to pay more. Were they happy when the sewer separation project came about? Did anybody call you guys and say, hey, you know what? My bill went up two-thirds. Can you raise it another third? Because it's good work we're doing. I don't think I would hear that other than in Fantasyland. This is an unfunded federal mandate by the eggheads in DC who don't give a damn about the city of Fitchburg nor its residents, because they think our residents are rolling in the dough. Last I checked, our median household income is under $50,000. Those jerks in DC, and I'll call them that, because they don't care what they impose on our people, they think they can afford it. I still can't get over the stormwater, the sewer separation. The EPA actually told this council six years ago, your residents can pay for it. Tell them to buck up and pay for it. That's what they said. Wonderful. They don't care, because they don't get the phone calls. No one's denying this work needs to be done. No one's denying this work is necessary. What is a problem is they swoop down on high from their perch and say, we're going to make you do this all of a sudden, but we're not going to give you any money for it. So, I read a couple of weeks ago about how the feds, who are very good at spending money efficiently, blow $125 billion a year, but they can't give us $400,000 a year to implement what they're telling us to do. So, I'm very passionate about these unfunded mandates, because the people who impose them on these cities and towns, they don't give a damn about the fallout, because they don't have to listen to it. So, the people of the city may agree that it's necessary work, but they're not going to like it if they got to pay for it. And I don't blame them, because they've been taken to the woodshed many times already on their bills for things we didn't ask them to do, the feds did. So, where this is going to end up going, I call on it now, there's going to be a recommendation to create an enterprise fund where these funds will go towards it, taxing the residents more, and I'm not going to vote for that, not now, not ever. I've had it with these EPA people, all right? Let them pay for it, although they were unemployed for a little while, but they're getting their back pay. Last thing I'll say about the temporary help. If any council in this room has a problem with temporary workers, I would suggest that they please provide the mayor and his finance team a detailed plan as to where to make, and I'm going to emphasize this word, practical cuts. Practical, not impractical cuts, because every year when we get our budget, the mayor has a million point five, $1.5 million increase before he sits down in growth in health insurance and pensions, in perpetuity until 2032. $1.5 million. What do we collect in extra prop two-and-a-half revenue? $1.2 million. So, every dime the residents get squeezed on every year when their taxes are raised goes to those two funds, and it's not even enough to cover it. That's why temporary work is looked upon right now. For me, I agree. We need to hire more bodies in DPW, but it's a give and take. You're going to add six to them? Get rid of six elsewhere, because we have all these increases that are already happening before we sit down. So, I just want the residents to understand, this isn't a matter of where the DPW comes hat in hand to the mayor and says, I need more people, and whoever the mayor is goes, I don't care. I'm sitting on a boatload of cash, but I'm not going to give it to you. It's not how it works. So, as a former temporary employee of the DPW for a few years in the cemetery department, I have no problem with temporary work where it's necessary. I only care that the work gets done and it gets done right, and I understand why this mayor and the previous mayor did not add bodies, not because they don't want to, not because they can't, they can afford to, they can afford to right now. There's got to be a give and take. So, next budget session, I'd be interested to see some practical cut recommendations, not ridiculous ones, that actually get him to six DPW workers, which is probably going to be between $300,000 and $400,000. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report excluding 009. Counselor Donnelly.
It's just a comment about the mandate. If there was no mandate, we'd still be kicking it down the road. This plan's on the shelf 40 years ago, that the city was supposed to do this. So, I'm not blaming any, anyone here, and not even blaming the past administrations, but we're blaming the feds for giving us a mandate to do it now. The plans were on the shelf 40 years ago. It's nobody here's fault, but just telling you, the plans were here over 40 years ago. You could ask John O'Connor, the engineer that was here for 30 years. Water, some of the water improvements too. So, I'm just, nobody wants to hear the history lesson, but this just didn't come about a couple of years ago. It's been on the books for many, many years. We're finally doing it. Do we like it? No. Is it costing us a lot of money? Absolutely. We're doing what we have to do.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report excluding 009. Yes.
I have a question.
Counselor Dina Tally.
To what Counselor Donnelly just said, has MS-4 been in the works for 30 or 40 years, or was it the sewer separation project? I recall it was the sewer separation project.
You are absolutely correct.
This is MS-4, Counselor. This is, this was just thrown at us a year ago, and it was pending litigation at the federal court level, because cities and towns were going nuts over this, because it just came out of nowhere, and I think it's still in litigation. I'm not sure, but we're trying to get ahead of it. So, it's two separate matters. I just want the public to understand, what we're talking about right now was not something the feds told us 40 years ago. So, this, this came
he sits down in growth in health insurance and pensions, in perpetuity until 2032. $1.5 million. What do we collect in extra prop two-and-a-half revenue? $1.2 million. So every dime the residents get squeezed on every year when their taxes are raised goes to those two funds, and it's not even enough to cover it. That's why temporary work is looked upon right now. For me, I agree, we need to hire more bodies in DPW, but it's a give and take. You're going to add six to them, get rid of six elsewhere. Because we have all these increases that are already happening before we sit down. So I just want the residents to understand, this isn't a matter of where the DPW comes hat in hand to the mayor and says, I need more people, and whoever the mayor is goes, I don't care, I'm sitting on a boatload of cash, but I'm not going to give it to you. It's not how it works. So as a former temporary employee of the DPW for a few years in the cemetery department, I have no problem with temporary work where it's necessary. I only care that the work gets done and it gets done right. And I understand why this mayor and the previous mayor did not add bodies, not because they don't want to, not because they can afford to, they can afford to right now. There's got to be a give and take. So next budget session, I'd be interested to see some practical cut recommendations, not ridiculous ones, that actually get him to six DPW workers, which is probably going to be between $300,000 and $400,000. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report, excluding 009. Counselor Donnelly.
It's just a comment about the mandate. If there was no mandate, we'd still be kicking it down the road. This plan's on the shelf for 40 years ago, that the city was supposed to do this. So I'm not blaming anyone here, and not even blaming the past administrations, but we're blaming the feds for giving us a mandate to do it now. The plans were on the shelf 40 years ago. It's nobody here's fault, but just telling you, the plans were here over 40 years ago. You could ask John O'Connor, the engineer that was here for 30 years. Water, some of the water improvements too. So I'm just, nobody wants to hear the history lesson, but this just didn't come about a couple of years ago. It's been on the books for many, many years. We're finally doing it. Do we like it? No. Is it costing us a lot of money? Absolutely. We're doing what we have to do.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report, excluding 009. Yes.
I have a question.
Counselor Dina Tally.
To what Counselor Donnelly just said, has MS4 been in the works for 30 or 40 years? Or was it the sewer separation project? I recall it was the sewer separation project.
You are absolutely correct.
This is MS4, Counselor. This was just thrown at us a year ago, and it was pending litigation at the federal court level because cities and towns were going nuts over this because it just came out of nowhere. And I think it's still in litigation, I'm not sure, but we're trying to get ahead of it. So it's two separate matters. I just want the public to understand, what we're talking about right now was not something the feds told us 40 years ago. So this came on high, out of the blue. That's all. Thank you.
I accept the correction. I apologize, but this expense wouldn't be so high if we had complied with prior stuff many years ago.
And I would add that the point of Counselor Donnelly's comments will be true. If we don't act now, 40 years down the road, we're going to be regretting when the federal government is once again holding a hammer over our head, telling us what we need to do. We see the writing on the wall, we know what we need to do, and it hurts, and we don't like paying for it, but we know ultimately where the wind is blowing, and it's time for us to act. Otherwise, future counselors and future residents will be very disappointed that we failed to act at the appropriate time. That said, I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report, excluding 00919. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion to approve 00919.
I have a motion and second to approve 00919. Speaking on the motion.
Speaking on the motion.
Counselor Boishman.
I approved that 00919 because a lot of you know how I feel about supporting the airport right now at this present time. I go back to my previous statement, I believe that they could be more cuts down there, and we haven't done all what we can, and if they made the cuts, I would more than happily support the airport, but we haven't made them. Now, I've been asking for six years, six years I've been asking, why isn't there a log sheet? I know, when I drive around the city of Pittsburgh, I know what the police department's doing, I know what the fire department's doing, I know what the DPW is doing, I know what the water department's doing, but we don't know what the airport's doing. Now, you're all going to look at me and say, wow, wow. I brought it to Council President, we had a meeting, and I says, I've been watching the TV, a TV on the side of the road down on Airport Road, on Airport property, for over two months. So I said to myself, Paul, be patient, be kind, be nice. We gave them $27,000 for a brand-new tractor, and they're cutting the grass. And I'm sorry, you know, I said, Paul, you've got a big field out there and they're cutting the grass. And then I looked, well, wait a minute. Then I saw them, I said, well, maybe they're cleaning the airport with brooms because they're cleaning the airport so the airplanes can land, because that TV is still there. And so tell me what they're doing. Tell me, so I can justify in my head what they do down there. I am not supporting this 009. I believe that more cuts and everything that I have since I've been on this committee states that they can make more cuts. So I'm not supporting it, and I'm asking for your support on it. And I would talk about what Counselor Donnelly passed out tonight, but I promised Mr. President that I wouldn't do it because he's going to have a special meeting in a couple of weeks.
And Counselors, I'd remind you, I know there's a desire to perhaps talk about the airport in further detail. The airport manager and members of the Airport Commission will be here on February 19th. There'll be a special presentation regarding not only the physical plans, as well as the financial plans and financial feasibility and sustainability of the airport. Again, that's on February 19th. So I prefer that, I know we could engage in a discussion now, but I think all of the details and long-term plans will be available to us to be able to have a more spirited and informed discussion and deliberation or debate at that time. So with that, we have a motion and second to accept 00919. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Dina Tally.
I just want to point out that when we talk about budget cuts for any department, specifically this one, the airport budget has been reduced by 35% since 2009. 35%. Last year, they were reduced by 3%, and the year before that, by 6%. Their budget is $660,000. It was 1.1 million in 2009. So their budget is almost half what it was 10 years ago. So I'm all for looking for cuts, but I just want the public to understand that this department has taken a whack quite frequently in the last 10 years, and the data shows that. So we know why this has been approved by the committee. We had this discussion during the budget last season. The airport is going through a time right now where they are not making the revenue necessary to keep up with their meager expenses because a lot of their money-making abilities are on hold because of FAA projects like the runway expansion and the self-serve fuel and...
Counselor, I know we could go into immense detail, and I know there's a number of counselors that like to speak.
I'll make it brief. Okay, I'll make it brief. I just, so there is a methodology behind this, and we're hoping in a couple of years, when the improvements are done, they'll be back to self-sustainability, and we won't have to do this anymore. If that isn't the case then, then we can discuss that at the appropriate time during budget season to assess what's really going on. Thank you.
And again, we'll have an opportunity on February 19th, full meeting, information, in-depth detail, we can go as long as we need to flesh this. Counselor Green is giving me the look because she'll actually be chairing that meeting, so I'm volunteering as much of the time on the agenda as is needed. I have a motion and second to accept 00919. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? To an opposition, Counselors Donnelly and Boishman. Motion carries, 9 to 2. Legislative Affairs Committee oral report, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, President Kuschemerick. We met earlier this evening. There were two items on the agenda, 31018, Counselors Boishman and Donnelly, to raise the fee in Chapter 149-10 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh to $300 per day. In Chapter 149-4 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh, strike the phrase "Accept NGL Chapter 93, Sections 29 to 32," and any other section of the code where same is referenced. The committee recommended that we maintain the fee change to $300 per day, and that we require a permit for any change in content, and then require Planning Board approval for such change in content. That was 31018. 06718 was its Counselor Michael Kuschemerick to require all short-term rental units to register and have a regular inspection as outlined in the attached document. There were two motions made and unanimously approved. The first one was refer to the fire building and public health for input on regulatory measures on public health and safety, and a list of principles that was approved unanimously. The second motion was to refer to the Legal Council for review of zoning regulations regarding subunit rentals, and that was also approved unanimously.
I believe Counselor Zarela had a point of information on 31018.
Just on the signs, the reference to the Planning Board was actually to request Planning Board input on any zoning revisions pertaining to...
I accept your, I take your point.
Motion to approve Legislative Affairs Committee report.
Second, I have a motion and second to approve the Legislative Affairs Committee oral report. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Green.
I would like to just address 06718. I do believe that there should be a delineation of rules that everybody follow in this type of situation, whether it's short-term rental, bed and breakfast, owner occupied, three or under, serving breakfast, no breakfast, there just needs to be a delineation of rules. And I do support there being definitely a registry so that the city has reference to know what houses are operating as Airbnbs or short-term rentals. I think we owe that to our residents and the neighbors of those facilities. I also would just like to talk about the importance of having licensures. Licensures are important, set by, because they set a standard of rules and regulations that should be followed by everybody who falls under that regulation. And again, code compliance and code enforcement for this industry, again, whether it may be new to our community now, but there will be a point in time when more and more people seek to do this as revenue or to fill a need. So, I mean, I support the petition, and I do agree that there does need to be some clarification with this from our department heads moving forward with this. Thank you.
I'll just add, you know, be certainly interested to see what our relevant departments come back with for feedback, and I think that's when, you know, the committee and then perhaps ultimately the council will need to make some decisions on which areas are most relevant. You know, for me, it's striking a balance between public safety and the safety of those visitors or guests, and also ensuring that there's not onerous requirements on the hosts of these services because I believe it provides immense value and benefit to our community. So I think we can strike that balance, and certainly I'll be interested to see where these departments come back in terms of being able to ensure that we can keep visitors and guests safe. And I think we can ultimately do this incrementally as well, of, you know, set a new foundation and then continue to review on a regular basis from there. With that said, I have a motion and second to accept the Legislative Affairs Oral Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? The motion is unanimous. Orders other, 02319, order that the city council authorizes a superintendent to submit to the Mass School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated February 12, 2019, for the South Street Elementary School located at 376 South Street, Pittsburgh, Mass, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which the application may be submitted to the Mass School Building Authority in the future. South Street West Building Roof, South Street Building Boilers, Priority Number 5. Counselors, I just ask that we have a motion to send all three of these to the Finance Committee?
Motion to send all three, 02319 to 02719, Finance Committee.
I have a motion and second to send 023 up to and including 02519 to the Finance Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Petitions, 02619.
Motion to send 02619 to a public hearing on February 19th.
I have a motion and second to send 02619 to a public hearing on February 19th, 2019. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
2719 for the Council as a whole committee. Second.
As well as 28 and 2919.
Finance.
Okay. I have a motion and second to send 027 and 02819 to their respective committees. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarela.
I would just like to note that I am glad that we will have the opportunity to fully debate this because I am not trying to silence anyone, and I honestly resent the allegation, but I am not going to give my reasons right now because this is not the place to debate the petition in chief.
Counselor Squalia.
I would just like to point out that I have provided counselors with the proposed petition from Counselor Zarela, and also an alternative option. So the current option would be to limit counselors from participating in meetings, effectively silencing them from the table.
Counselor, if you would, I'd ask that you go into that detail at that appropriate meeting.
Yep, just an overview. And then the other option would be that we advertise all committee meetings, also as committee of the whole.
Not relevant to the motion on the table.
Just a point of information.
Counselor, this will be, all counselors have this, the clerk has this, will ensure that this is sent to the committee, to all members of the committee. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Dina Tally.
I know Council Teddy especially likes to take things slow. I guess I'm more pedal to the metal. I wanted to talk about this tonight. We're all here, the attorney's here, Counselor Zarela's here. We're going to now move this for another week, allow more people to make ridiculous speculations like you've already heard tonight. I don't want to send it to council as a whole. I want to talk about it now. We don't have to vote on it tonight, but I want to talk about it now. So I'm not going to vote for this. I want us to talk about it now. We're all here, she's here. I don't know why we're delaying it a week. I'm going to speak for myself. I've already read the AG's ruling, I've read the attorney's opinion, I've read his petition and talked to him personally.
Counselor Dina Tally.
I'm ready to talk about it tonight. So I'm not going to learn anything new in a week. That's all.
Assistant City Solicitor Tree.
So my commentary on this would be that the reason for taking this under suspension of the rules today and having a vote on it would be because the exigency is that, in our opinion, the council is currently violating the open meeting law. That is a reason to take it tonight. The reason to not take it tonight would be because this does touch upon the way the council is conducted, and the council might consider how the public participates in its committee meetings. But if that's the option that the council were to take, to not take this on tonight, I would ask that the counselors abide by the advice that's given in the letter until this petition is considered and passed. When a city council acts on the advice of its legal advisor and the AG finds it's in violation of the open meeting law, there is some protection from fines being imposed by the AG's office. That is not the case if the council acts in contradiction to the advice that's been given. So I would ask that either one of those two options be taken, either take it tonight under suspension of the rules, or abide by the advice until it's considered.
Thank you. Counselor Zarela.
I am amenable to either option. I would simply suggest that if we were to take it tonight, that we entertain a motion to take it under informal consideration so as to relax the rules of debate and allow for the same degree of debate that we would have at a council as a whole committee.
Counselor Squalia.
I would absolutely suggest that we take our time with this because there is more than one option than just the option presented to us. There are more than one option to complying with open meeting law. And we've had, we were just given this agenda on Thursday, and given the solicitor's letter on Thursday of last week, so we need time to research more information. In just that one week, I've spoken with many people, but I haven't had enough time to talk to the Attorney General's Office or to get a formal determination from the city solicitor's office. Assistant City Solicitor Tree and I have had numerous email discussions, but we haven't worked out exactly the best solution, which I think we are working out here. So I certainly wouldn't suggest that we rush through this. I think it's very important to find a solution that works for all of us and that allows us all participation.
When now Representative Hay was council president, he always considered that first. When a council was asking for more time and for something to be sent to a committee, to not rush through something, that that be given primary on utmost consideration. And I agree that a council is asking for more time, and the alternative is suspending the rules and taking this through immediately. I think we can both adhere to open meeting law through, by adhering temporarily to the advice of our Assistant City Solicitor Tree, and while we then send this to committee to then take it under consideration at that time. So that would certainly be my preference, would be to send that to the committee as long as, again, we, through our committees, in the meantime, adhere to the advice that our city solicitors have given us. Counselor Dina Tally.
So there will be a Finance Committee next Tuesday, so...
The advice the Solicitor's Office has given is any counselor who is not on the committee needs to sit in the audience, not be addressed as counselor. They may however speak just like the public does during any public comment period.
That's perfectly fine with me.
Or is along by the chair.
Fine with me, yep. And we'll see if there's fallout from the public that people are being restricted.
Counselor Squalia.
In this intermediate time for matters that are on the Finance Committee agenda, I would like to request that any representatives of the petition, the school building authority, I would imagine, also attend the regular council meetings so that counselors are able to ask questions to represent the citizens' interests. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
Go back where Counselor Dina Tally said. I would say we're having a Finance Committee meeting just before the full council as a whole. That's what I was going...
Is the Finance Committee meeting scheduled for...
It is not, Mr. President. I set the meeting notice, and that's news to me as the chairman. We're supposed to have a meeting on Tuesday. I will talk to Count Mr. Brooks tomorrow, but I don't know who's talking to you, but I'm the final say on meetings for Finance Committee. So it's news to me.
Counselors, that is, yeah, just to provide that clarification, each committee meeting needs a... meets at the discretion, the sole discretion of the committee chair, and that will be decided at that time. So, I will leave it to Councilor Deena Tally to set the Finance Committee, and ensure that we're all properly informed.
Okay. On that question, I just thought, I was just saying that, because I was thinking something different.
I have a motion and second. Councilor Green.
I just want to make sure, do we have a date, then, for this council as a whole?
I have not yet set it, because I was unsure of what action this council would take. I will most likely set this within the next 48 hours.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I have a motion and second to send 027 and 028 to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
2919 be sent to a public hearing on April 2, 2019, and to the Planning Board.
I have a motion and second to send 02919 to a Planning Board, to a Planning Board and a public hearing before the city council on April 2, 2019. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, I just want to remind everybody that we have our Winterfest program this Saturday at Cogswell Park, starting at noon, I think. It's noon.
Noon, noon to five.
A lot of family-friendly stuff going on. Come on, enjoy yourself. I think we'll probably have a little bit of snow out there, won't we? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Green.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public knows that there is already a two-hour delay for Pittsburgh Public Schools tomorrow morning.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, councilors.[1777.76]